Rotate your phone.
Okay. It's coming up now.
Right there, what's this?
Well, they can turn their phone.
Yeah, they just have to do that.
Just let them turn their phone.
We'll call the meeting doors. Welcome everybody tonight. Uh, our first item will be approval of the agenda. I need a motion, Bill. I have a motion in a second to approve, law and papers say. Any opposed? Motion carried. The next item is discussion on reopening of Scott County Schools. Dr. Hug.
Well, good evening, everybody that's in here in person and in the Zoom meeting for tonight. I'm Dr. Kevin Nux, Superintendent Scott County Schools. And it's my opportunity tonight to really add some additional clarification points to the reopening of Scott County Schools' plan that we've been dribbling out in little bits throughout the summer. I think what's important to realize is that, you know, we have had a specific timeline throughout this process to make sure that information has been shared. But I want to also let everybody know that we understand that you have individual questions based on yourself and your family and your students, and that you want an opportunity to have those questions answered. So, um, there is no question that is a stupid question tonight. When we're gonna have a time to answer your questions, there will be some that will be repetitive. So, um, it may be as simple as me saying we've answered that question before, or it may be as simple as me restating the question but doing it a lot more simply. Let's talk about some of the things that we've already talked about. I know many folks in the community were a little bit nervous about a lack of communication in a parent survey during the month of June. It was always our intent to send out a parent survey during the month of July 1 because it got us closer to what we believed was the beginning of school. Also, we believed we were gonna have more information that was gonna make the distribution of that survey much more helpful. And it proved to be true for us, luckily, probably, but it proved to be true that when we sent our parent survey out in the first week of July, we knew the Healthy at School guidelines had already been issued. We knew that masks, when we couldn't social distance, were gonna be required. And we also knew that temperature checks upon the entry of our buildings for students and staff were also gonna be required. I will also say that it's been, um, it's been my plan to keep the communication as simple as possible to talk about the plans of reopening schools in the most broadest of strokes. I'll give you one specific example that just happened this week. If this meeting were to have happened on Tuesday night and an employee would have asked a question about what happens if I am forced to quarantine more than one time, would I have to use my own sick days? Well, the truth on Tuesday was yes. At that time, the only opportunity that we had in those scenarios was for staff to use 10 days of the Family First Cares Act. Well, what's happened recently, and I think many of you have heard the Lieutenant Governor talk about this, is that now this board has the opportunity, like we did in the spring, to declare unlimited emergency days for those staff that need it due to quarantine issues. And that will be in action by the board members that will take up at our August meeting. And that will be plenty of time to do that. Again, I want to say that, uh, as I've talked to parents and staff members, and actually students, I've got emails from students, as I've talked to people over the phone and through email, I'm sensing that there's a relief in the sense that they're getting answers to their questions. I still understand that there is a ton of anxiety in the community. There's a ton of trepidation about what might happen, and, uh, there are still lots of questions. Tonight, it's certainly possible, and I would say likely, that there are gonna be questions that don't have specific answers yet. Uh, we have folks on my team that are gonna be developing a frequently asked questions document, and we know that there are gonna be some questions that we're gonna have answers that are gonna come a little bit later. It's also entirely possible that what we say tonight on Thursday, July 23rd, as being the truth, may in fact change as soon as tomorrow. I will tell you that about 6 o'clock this evening, I got an email from Commissioner Brown, like all superintendents did, and the Education Commissioner was asking boards to consider, and superintendents to recommend to boards, that we not start any earlier than the middle of August. Now, this board tonight is gonna get in front of them a school calendar that's gonna show the first student day of attendance of August 26th because early in the summer, we had made that switch from mid-August until the end of August. That's the one thing that the Governor has asked Commissioner to ask us to do, and also to prepare a plan for going full virtual. Again, that's not our plan now, and you're gonna see later that we've really got a lot of those questions answered. Tonight, of course, we're limited to 50 here in the board office. Everybody else is social distance and wearing masks. But I'm gonna use the same protocol that is used widely where the speaker is unmasked, if you will. This is being carried by Georgetown News Graphic on Facebook Live. Um, we are also recording this Zoom meeting, and I anticipate before the end of the day tomorrow that it will be out on our website, and we'll distribute those links. I also want to let everybody know that I will be doing the same presentation on the reopening plan for Scott County Schools during this Monday, July 27th, Chamber Luncheon, um, presentation, Chamber Luncheon at Noon, but it starts at 11:30. There are still opportunities for people to register for that session. Uh, that Zoom session has the capacity for 5,000 attendees, and there aren't that many attendees now. You can visit the Chamber website tomorrow morning on Friday the 24th between 8:00 and 10:00 a.m. They have reopened the window for registration. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that, uh, and you may say, well, all of us that are on the meeting tonight are seeing you, but what about the people who can't? Are they gonna get this? Well, I'm hopeful those of you on social media will say, hey, listen, sister-in-law, I know you couldn't get in tonight, but there's an opportunity for you to go hearing live at the Chamber Luncheon on Monday. Plus, this is gonna be recorded, and oh, by the way, Georgetown News Graphic is doing this Facebook Live. You know, I've been so lucky. I'm starting year five here in Scott County, and, uh, this community from day one has been very supportive of education, and we certainly hope that you'll continue to do so during what's our new normal, this pandemic of COVID-19. It's certainly gonna require patience and tolerance as we move through what is gonna be the school year of 2020, 2021. I think what you're gonna find out is that we are developing plans that, to the extent possible, provide our citizenry, our community, our students, our staff, and their families the most options possible. Certainly, other school boards and other superintendents are doing what they think is best for their community, and we are doing things a little bit differently. You're gonna hear some things tonight. You're gonna ask me some questions tonight about a district that does this, and are we gonna do it that way? In a lot of cases, we're not. In some cases, you may think, good, I'm glad Scott County's doing it a little bit differently. In some cases, you may be frustrated because we aren't doing it the way that another district does. I want to talk about some big pictures, and then what I'm gonna do, because, uh, my team, who helps me craft these messages, believes, and I do too, I'm gonna walk through a day in the life of what in-person look, uh, in-person education is gonna look like. I'm gonna hit the high points about virtual learning, and then we're gonna open it up for questions. Let me start by saying, right now, we have chat disabled. Once I finish, and I think I'm really only gonna talk for about another five minutes once I get started, we want to be able to answer all of the questions that you have. We will enable the chat feature in Zoom, and we're gonna take those questions one at a time. What you may not know is I teach online graduate classes every week, so teaching and answering questions and asking questions in an online format is something that's second nature to me. I've been doing it for a dozen years. Now, if all 300 of you expect right now to ask a question, that will be a little bit hard to do. So I would just, again, reiterate the fact that I had asked for some patience and tolerance, and, uh, follow along with me. By using chat, you all will be able to see where the questions come up and how I'm able to get through them. And then if for some reason you're, you feel that I skipped over your question, then you're certainly able to reissue that question. So, now let me get to some of the things that we're gonna do. What we've said from the beginning, and there's not a deviation to that plan, is that our plan in Scott County is to open in-person for students on Wednesday, the 26th of August. Why are we gonna do that? We're gonna do that because as education professionals in Scott County, we believe the very best way to provide education to our students is to do so in-person. But I also want everybody to hear me say that we understand that in-person is not gonna work for some students and their families. Maybe it's health reasons, maybe about what might happen. Maybe you're not confident that our plans are well-developed enough that you want to give us a little bit of time to see how everything's gonna go. So for those reasons, we offer two more options. You may do a virtual option, and we'll talk in more detail about that later. But the big issue to think about there is it's not gonna be non-traditional instructional days because those weren't meant to be the long duration that we're having to go through here during COVID-19. What we are trying to do is to change the way school looks. We're trying to make school look more like home instead of forcing home to look like school. And in Scott County, we're gonna use the Google classroom platform, and we think that's gonna be pretty helpful. We're also gonna offer paper pencil packets for those students that either choose to have them or they don't have the streaming access that they would like to have. And again, I'll talk more about some things that we're doing virtually later. We did send out a registration form, and we're calling it kind of softly Parent Survey Number Two. Parent Survey Number One and Staff Survey Number One were anonymous. Anonymity was important because we wanted unfiltered questions and comments and answers to our questions so that we could get a stepping off point to develop these plans. Well, Parent Survey Number Two is out there, and it looks like a registration form, and we need that specific information to the extent that you're willing to provide it. You have to know that we were thrilled with the response that we got with Parent Survey One. More than 5,500 parents responded representing more than 8,000 children. That's an 80% response rate, which is outstanding. I talked to the superintendent in Woodford County today, and they're running about a 65% return rate on their very similar survey that they have on the street right now. We need to get 65, 70, 75% of you responding to this so that we can develop our master schedules so that we can work on our class list. But what is, what's important for everybody to hear me say is this, and this does differ from a lot of districts. As parents and families, you will not be locked in to a single choice, period. We're not gonna, if you choose in-person, we're not gonna make you wait until fall break to toggle out and do virtual. If you choose virtual, we're not gonna make you wait until fall break or the end of a natural term to toggle back into in-person. We also understand that there might be cases where childcare for a family, they're able to secure it on Thursday and Friday, they want to keep their kids home all five days, but they can't. Maybe they'll send those children Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and they'll keep them at home on Thursday, Friday. Here is why we're not concerned about that. Number one, you should already be hearing the options that we are providing for our students and their families to make it work for them. Because we're gonna be using a similar format in-person and virtually, we're not worried about a tremendous loss of student achievement as they go back and forth. Now, what we don't want to have happen is for your son or daughter to wake up a little cranky and decide that they don't want to go to school today, so they get an automatic stay-home pass. As you can imagine, with 10,000 kids, that's not gonna help us develop a plan. But again, I want everybody to hear me say that we've got these options, and we want you as a family to choose the option that works best for you, and we're gonna develop a plan that's gonna be beneficial to students. So let's talk about if the choice is in-person. And if you didn't see any of the press releases about, uh, student survey or parent survey number one, 73% of the students that responded said they were gonna come face-to-face, while 27% said that they were gonna be staying home. We are gonna provide student transportation. We are gonna allow children to ride the bus. Students will be required to wear masks on the bus. We're gonna make sure that we follow the Healthy at School guidelines from the state, and we're gonna fill buses up from the back to the front. We're gonna keep a seat open behind the bus driver, and we're gonna have seating charts so that if we have to use contact tracing, we're able to do so as efficiently as we can. We're gonna ask family members to sit together, and surely you all understand why that makes sense. As you probably already know, specifically to our bus driver population, many of them are in the fragile group of 60 or older. We've got 80 bus routes generally, and if we have fewer than 80 bus drivers that can drive and/or feel that it's safe to come to work, what might happen is we may have to modify our plans for pupil transportation. What does that mean? What does modify our plans for pupil transportation mean? Well, what it might mean is that we have some expanded routes. We may have some different arrival times, some different pickup times. Um, I was talking to Billy Parker earlier today, and when I was a teacher at Madison Central, we had two school buses every day from a smaller community called Waco that arrived 10 minutes late every single day. That's just what it was. Currently, we strive to keep bus routes under one hour. Well, if we're not running a full complement of routes, but we still want to offer pupil transportation to all of the families in the community, maybe we have bus routes that are a little bit longer. I just want to share that we've got a plan in place if not all of our bus drivers feel that it's safe and comfortable to come to work. Now, what I want you to hear is that through Staff Survey Number One, we're very optimistic and very excited that most of our staff members are telling us that they feel comfortable, they are confident in our plans to keep them healthy and safe, and that they do plan to return to work. Just like there was Parent Survey One and Parent Survey Two, we expect Staff Survey Two to go out next week. Once all of our students who are choosing in-person arrive at school, it's gonna be required that temperature checks are taken. The current threshold is a temperature of 100.4. If a child has a temperature greater than 100.4, we're gonna isolate those students. We're gonna isolate those students. We're gonna have them under care of school nurses. And further medical tests and protocols are gonna come in place. And I will tell you that at this point, those protocols keep changing. We are not gonna keep a child out on the curb if they test with a fever when they come to school. We're gonna take them to a separate room. We're gonna isolate them to keep other students safe. We're gonna contact you as a parent, and again, we're gonna run through them a health protocol that the Health Department and the Department of Public Health is gonna mandate for us. We're gonna do this same process if students throughout the day show the symptoms that align with COVID-19. And we were really excited in our parent survey that 98% of those that responded to the survey said that as parents, they were very well aware of the symptoms of COVID-19. Masks. Again, I felt pretty fortunate that when we were able to announce our reopening plans the very first time, we had the Healthy at School guidance already from the Kentucky Department of Education and the government. And that guidance required two things. Temperature checks upon entry to school for students and staff. And the second thing that it required is that all students and all staff will wear masks unless we can keep social distance. That's six-foot social distance bubble, if you will, that does not require somebody to wear a mask. There are opportunities for students and staff to get medical exemptions where it's not required for them to wear a mask. We also understand that some parents will send their children to school and won't tell their, or will tell their children not to wear a mask. It's not my job to tell the parents of 10,000 kids how to raise their children, so I'm certainly not gonna do so. But what I will say is this, for any child that is not wearing a mask, and this is, uh, this is a point that may, I just want everybody to really listen clearly to this point because for some, initially, it comes across as kind of awkward. But if you think about the bare fact, then it's not too bad. Regardless of the reason why you are not wearing a mask, if it's because you choose not to wear a mask, if it's because your father tells you not to wear a mask, or if it's because your pediatrician says you're not required to wear a mask, that's okay. You're not gonna wear a mask. But what that means is that you are now a child that is not wearing a mask. We have to keep you isolated from other children. So, in each of our schools, I mentioned that we're gonna have a health room, an isolation health room, because if you've been in our school nurse offices, it's not practical or really possible that we can social distance those that have temperatures higher than 100.4 each morning. So we're gonna identify auxiliary spaces in each school for our health rooms. We're also identifying spaces in each of our schools where we can isolate these students who are not wearing a mask. It's not a punishment. It's not an in-school suspension. It's just required that we keep them away from other students since we can't social distance them. And how will that work education-wise? Well, teachers and instructional aides and other education professionals will deliver them work throughout the day. If the students in their class who are wearing masks are on Google Classroom and they're taking a quiz, well, then the child who is not wearing a mask is probably gonna be given a computer in an isolation room, and they're gonna be doing the same thing. It's just that they won't be around their classmates, and they may be around students in other grades and other classes who are also not wearing masks. One of the things that we understand, and I guess it's really important for everybody to hear me say, with the numbers of students in our classes and with the physical size of our classes, it's really not something that you should expect that our classes are gonna be able to keep our children socially distanced. 17 or 18 students in a class in most classes, some a little bit more, some a little bit less, is about how many students you can keep in a class and keep everybody socially distanced. So, under the belief that most people, students and staff, are gonna be in masks all day, what I've told our principals to do is this. I am okay in every classroom, in every school, during every hour of the day for teachers to take their students outside, then they can unmask, walk around the parking lot, get some fresh air, stretch in the grass, to come back in. Because I do understand the frustration for some, the anxiety for some that comes with, and the claustrophobia for some that comes with wearing a mask for hours and hours and hours at a time. It's still the most important thing we can do to mitigate the spread of coronavirus, but one thing that we can do is give these wellness breaks throughout the day so students and staff can go outside, they can take off their mask, they can breathe some fresh air, and they can get back inside. These aren't recess breaks every hour. I imagine they're five- to seven-minute breaks that teachers are gonna take. The principal seemed really optimistic that this was gonna be a, uh, this was gonna be a morale booster for students and staff in schools. Meals. Yes, we are gonna continue to feed children. So in school, we're gonna provide breakfast options. There will be cold breakfast options some days. There will be hot breakfast options on other days. Every day during lunch, there will be a single hot option and a single cold option. We are gonna make sure that our students are socially distanced when they eat. So another auxiliary space that we're gonna be using in each of our schools is a place for students to eat. Yes, it is more likely than not that your children sometime may be eating their lunch on their lap. It's just, it's just the way that we're gonna have to do it. We're not able to put every single child in the cafeteria. And we don't have double sets of cafeteria tables that allow us to social distance on cafeteria tables. Some schools have student desks that they've already deployed to gymnasium. Both of our high schools have grand hallways that they can use, so principals have a plan. But again, students are gonna be given options for breakfast and lunch at school. So what about our families that choose the virtual option or the paper pencil packets? Those families will also be able to pick up a meal for their child at that school. We thought that an entire family could pick up a family's worth of meals at one school, but the federal National School Lunch Program guidelines don't allow us to do that. So if you have a child at Standing Ground and a child at Scott Middle, you will need, if you choose to do so, to pick up a meal at Standing Ground for that child and to pick up a meal at Scott Middle for that child. When you pick up this meal, you will be given lunch for that day and then a non-perishable breakfast item for the next day. On Friday, you will be given Friday lunch and, again, a non-perishable food item that will take you through Monday lunch. I'm sorry, Monday breakfast. What's important to note is that the summer feed program has not been extended. We're hopeful that it gets extended, but the current regulations say that when we start school on August 26th, we will revert back to the payment for breakfasts and lunches as we have in the past. That's not a Scott County Schools' choice. That's a federal mandate. Again, we're optimistic that our state and national leaders can, uh, can, can come to an agreement that that's gonna be something important to do, because I know that this board has really been excited about, uh, the, I mean, I don't know, I think for hundreds of thousands of breakfasts and lunches that we've served since, uh, March. So we want to continue to do that. The fact that they're not gonna cost for our paid families, uh, I think you would understand that that's really out of our control. Those folks on free of reduced lunch and those in our community eligibility program schools, our CEP schools, will still be free if they were free before. The last thing about in-person will be cleaning. Twain Nelson and his custodian staff and our maintenance team and the school staff, we're gonna make sure that we're gonna clean our high-touch areas often. One of the things that's come to our attention as a high-touch area is doorknobs. So what you're gonna see differently in our schools, or what you're gonna hear from differently from your children, is that our classroom doors are gonna be open. There has been a lot of discussion between the Department of Health folks and the Safe Schools folks, but it's universally believed that keeping doors open and not having everybody go in and out and touch that same doorknob is better than the possible risk to student safety that we're gonna have. Bathrooms are gonna be disinfected four times a day. We have disinfective misters that we're gonna use in school and out of school. For example, a mister is a great mechanism whereby we can clean our playgrounds between the times when students are gonna be at the playgrounds. There aren't gonna be shared water fountains. We're working to deploy water bottle fillers in every one of our schools, so we would encourage parents to have their children bring water bottles so that they can have something to drink with them while they are in school throughout the day. We've got hand sanitizing stations also. They're gonna be set up throughout the building. The next thing that I want to talk about is some of the things that we've done to effectively prepare for what's gonna be virtual learning. That virtual learning is gonna be a regular instruction that is gonna be supported by a certified teacher. We are gonna have intervention and support services, just like we would if we were in-person. We are gonna use the Google Classroom platform as the foundation for how we deliver virtual instruction. And as I mentioned earlier, we're gonna do the best that we can to make sure that our classrooms look more like home than forcing all of our homes to look like classrooms. Our technology team has done a great job to make sure that before school starts, we will have wireless access points available outside of every one of our schools. Our teachers are working on developing lessons, developing videos, mini clips, and resources that can be downloaded so that if a family has the technology that they can visit a school to download, but maybe they don't have streaming access at home, that they'll still be able to work within the virtual setting. We spent a lot of time this summer with hundreds of teachers participating in hundreds of PD professional development sessions on things like Mastery Connect, Freckle for our elementary folks, Google Classroom for beginners, Google Classroom for advanced, also USA Test Prep for the folks at the secondary level. I understand that we still have staff out there that weren't able, for a variety of reasons, to attend those professional development sessions in the summertime that we've offered. So with this new calendar, we've added additional workdays and additional professional development days so that we still can have an opportunity for teachers who haven't been trained to get more trained, and those trained, and those teachers that have been trained to get even better at this virtual platform. We got a lot of feedback, as lots of districts did this spring, on really how burdensome non-traditional instruction was to many families. And we heard you clearly across the Commonwealth, and we worked really hardly, hard, to make sure that this virtual classroom environment is gonna be different, and it's gonna allow students to excel, and it's not gonna require the intensive parent intervention that you might have felt as a parent, uh, this spring. I will say that, and I would've said 12 months ago, that the more intervention that we can get from parents, the better off our students are gonna be, whether it's an in-person environment before the pandemic, during the pandemic, or after the pandemic. So parents, we're looking forward to your help, but we understand the circumstances for lots of families are just a little bit different. but we understand the circumstances for lots of families are just a little bit different. As many of you are aware, the migrant population, the English language learner population in Scott County is vast. We have many students that either struggle to read and write in the English language, um, but they can speak the English language, or maybe vice versa. Maybe they have trouble speaking and understanding the English language, but they have the ability to read and write in English. We are making sure that we have many, uh, foreign language translations for the work that we're doing. The last thing that, that I, that I guess I want to say is that, uh, there's been some miscommunication or some assumptions based on what's happening in other districts. If students are eligible to participate in extracurriculars, and if those extracurriculars are happening, regardless of the choice that the student makes, paper, pencil, virtual, or in-person, they will be able to participate. So, here's, here is, uh, the point where we are at now. There are lots of things that I haven't talked about specifically now, because I think I could talk until August 26th about specifics, and there would still be questions. What, what I am hopeful to do, and again, the board seemed very supportive of this, is that, uh, I'm prepared now to have, uh, the room moderator, they're going to open up chat, and, uh, I'm prepared to answer your questions.
So, we have, like, someone read the question aloud and you answer them?
We do, and that's me.
Okay.
No, because everybody can see the same question. I am just reading the questions, so that I can make sure I give an answer.
Oh, people on Facebook Live, I thought we had.
Right.
Okay. So, um, so there's questions about, uh, for families with a child with an individualized education plan or specialty students, what initiatives are going to be taken to support those students? We are still going to provide those wraparound services. They are going to look a little differently. Of course, special education is, uh, guided by federal legislation, but we're going to continue to do the best that we can to provide those things. What is your plan for staff members that cannot wear a mask? The reason why it's so important for parents to give us this information is that then it allows schools to develop their master schedules based on teachers who aren't going to wear a mask, who aren't able to wear a mask, and those who are going to be in person. So, one of the options that's available is that teacher might be assigned to do the virtual learning. It might be that they are socially distanced in a isolation room where they're also with other people that can't wear a mask. Yes?
So, this is on the clock in the last second, but could we, for those people who could not get into the Zoom but were watching it Facebook Live, is there a way for them to ask questions?
Sure.
Get on there. Um, I'm just, sure.
And I would say that, uh, at 6:12, right, we were doing Facebook Live. So, um, that's a Georgetown news graphic, they get solved that problem. So, uh...
I think we'll get to the end and you will have answered any questions that they have, so...
Sure. Will band happen in the high schools? So, um, the, the Healthy at School Options and the Kentucky Music Educator Association talk about, uh, band. Large groups in classrooms playing instruments is not likely to happen. There are some guidance for pantyhose over the bell end of brass instruments and student masks with flappers so that they can access the mouthpiece. That's possible. But as recently as 10 days ago, the Woodwind family did not have, uh, answers for how they may participate. So, um, we know how important fine arts are to students, and certainly we're looking for a way for that to happen. Now, what we're probably going to plan for is for there to be banned in the master schedule so that in this beginning of school year where we can go outside, well, certainly we can play band instruments outside. And then when it comes time where they can't go outside, uh, maybe they can get a little bit of music history or music appreciation that will help them earn that elective band credit.
I missed your response to the, um, staff members that cannot wear masks. Could you repeat that, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Staff members are going to be treated like airbags. If they can't wear a mask, they can work virtually if their principal says that they have a spot virtually. Another option, of course, is for them to maybe be in the isolation room with all the other students that can't wear masks. Will there be live virtual instruction for elementary students? Yes, the elementary principals have a great plan. Here's one of the things that you need to think about because it might be interesting. It's possible that we will have a teacher from Western who is the virtual instructor for teachers from Gark, Lemons Mill, and Standing Ground. Because, understand that the way the curriculum works, second grade in each of those four schools is essentially second grade in each of those four schools. Yeah, but wait a minute. What if my student is a Standing Ground student and they go back to a second grade Standing Ground classroom? Remember, no big deal. The virtual instruction will closely approximate the online instruction and the in-person instruction, so toggling back and forth won't be an issue.
There was a question about bus drivers. Do bus drivers be required to wear masks?
Is that Facebook? Yeah, let's, uh, Facebook's going to have to wait, if we can, you know, we'll, we'll go back. Yeah, no, because there's, yeah, we won't be able to go back and forth.
I was just trying to interject because there was something I thought would go ahead.
They, yeah, Facebook can wait, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, will kindergartens wear masks? The Healthy at Education, Healthy at School says, no preschool students, no kindergarten students are required to wear masks. Certainly, many of those families of those children believe that they want them to wear masks, uh, but they're not required to do so. We have a few kindergarten first grade classrooms in the district, and, uh, kindergartners are not going to be required to wear masks, so we will work out social distancing to the extent possible. Will virtual students receive the same books, same materials, uh, as the in-person students? Yes, we will be able to make sure that we're able to do that. Now, in some cases, um, we have classes where books aren't issued to all students, so obviously, in that, in that case, it won't work. But teachers are moving away from textbook instruction, they're moving away, they're moving into the virtual instruction. What is the policy for when a child or teacher becomes exposed to or tests positive? We will have a decision tree that I would tell you we had last week, and it's on about revision number four. Again, I'm certainly not placing blame anywhere. I hope everybody realizes that the reason, the reason it's in revision four is because rules have changed four times since last week. We will have a decision tree that will tell us exactly what happens when somebody tests positive, when somebody has symptoms, when somebody that they live with has symptoms or has test positive, or somebody that they have come in contact with has symptoms or has test positive. It is entirely the case, and the reason why we are going to be so stringent upon the requirement to wear masks is that currently, the guidance that we're getting from the Department of Public Health, that it's possible for a child in a classroom to test positive and it not be the case that we require every single person in that class to self-quarantine. If we do require people to self-quarantine, students will be at home, they'll be placed in the virtual environment. For staff, the first 10 days, 10 paydays, which is going to match the 14 calendar day for the self-quarantine, uh, they're going to use that first Family First Care Act time. Let's say they're forced to quarantine in September, they use Family First. They're forced to quarantine in November, that second bite of the apple then be these paid emergency days that will have the board authorize next month. We have not, uh, taken any measures, provided new laptops, additional laptops. Um, the assumption is that if you are choosing the virtual environment, you understand that your child can be successful in the virtual environment. Do we have more details about how the disinfectant, uh, is used? Um, that can be a frequently asked question, or may, and I imagine we can give a link to that company, and I'm sure they have a YouTube about the effectiveness of that, uh, different. How will virtual be different from NTI? Well, I'll tell you that we've had a summer of professional development, and, and quite honestly, we spent a lot of the spring making virtual instruction better. Remember, we were fortunate in Scott County because we had been a district that had done NTI for three previous years, so the transition for us into the expanded NTI was not as difficult as it was for some, and, but we still know that wasn't the very best. So, we're confident that we've got the best plans for our students and their families to make it less cumbersome and that student achievement is going to improve. Okay, so, this exact same question about children with an IEP. Yes, we're going to provide those services to the extent possible. Those are federal guidelines, so, um, again, those are being changed. Just so that everybody knows, our Special Ed Director, Candy Visodi, is a member of our local education co-op, all of central Kentucky, and, and they are on a task force, if you will, to see how best to provide services for these students. What measures will be used to gauge and determine if a school should be closed? So, if we are not able to have enough staff to have school in person, we won't be able to have school in person. No differently than it is when flu hits. Also, if the governor mandates a shutdown of school for a period of time, we will also follow that mandate. But at this time, we're optimistic that we're going to be able to be able to start in person because, because we know a couple of things. We know that that's the best way to help students achieve, and we also know that for many of our families, um, they need to get back to work, we need to get the economy started, and we are making sure that we're providing a healthy and safe environment for school to have. No, so, if, if masks are required and a child can't wear a mask, is it our intent to ostracize? Absolutely not. Our intent is to follow the medical mandate, and that simply says, if you cannot social distance, you have to wear a mask. If a child is not wearing a mask for whatever reason, because they're choosing not to, their parents are telling them not to, or a doctor says not to, again, we understand and we will support that family's decision to have that child in person. But what we have to do in order to keep everybody else safe is to isolate the child and to make sure that they're socially distant. Great question. Is the virtual option structured on the daily schedule just like in-person? It's not. We're going to make options available so that it can be in some classes. But what we also know is that there are families where both parents work first shift during the day and they want to help their children, so yes, there are going to be times when assignments can be due in the evening. Also, it's important that although we track daily participation, many of our, many of our assignments were transitioning to having those things be done weekly. Will Elkhorn Crossing School students be transported between schools? Yes, they will. Is there going to be after-school care? Yes, there is, but the state guidelines, um, have minimized it significantly, but there will be more information out there. Uh, more questions about specific protocol when somebody tests positive. Again, um, we, we have a decision tree in the work. And when I say decision tree, it is as simple as you can put your finger on a box and answer a question yes or no, and move to the next box, answer yes or no, and then you get to your final answer. That will be put on the website, and once it gets finalized, again, we're in revision four, but we will have a plan when we start school on how to handle symptoms, positive tests, and exposure to people with symptoms and positive tests. If there's a positive COVID student or staff member, will school close? Not necessarily. Again, it's entirely possible that a student or staff member tests positive, they are removed from the class, and it's, and it's possible that if we have been following the social distancing protocols and if everybody has been wearing masks and we've been washing our hands and sanitizing throughout, that, uh, if people are symptom-free, we might not have to quarantine that entire classroom. So, the question is, will children switch classes, physically switch classes? In some schools, they will, most of the day. In some schools, they will all of the day, and in some schools, they won't. Again, many of these things, many of these decisions are going to be down at the school level just because of the different age of students, the classes that are offered, and the physical buildings that are there. Uh, Ms. Duncan, let me take three or four more from Zoom, and then we'll see, then you can roll through with some on that.
Sure.
Hold, let me take three or four more.
You go over there.
I'll do three or four more here, and then I'll ask you to march. Will virtual instruction be live? So, um, it is possible for a teacher to stream their instruction live. What we don't want to have happen is for teachers to stream an entire classroom live because there are some student privacy issues and some teacher performance issues, basically student discipline. I, I'm certainly not afraid to show you all how our teachers perform because they perform so well. But there are lots of things where, um, a live classroom presentation on the worldwide web is not something that we're going to do. Think about it this way. Tuesday at 10 o'clock, we don't allow any parent to come into any classroom in the district for a variety of reasons. So, yes, it's possible some of our teachers are getting very creative. Uh, some teachers may choose to do live and they may be by themselves uh, because they're going to have three, two or three or four blocks where they do in-person, and they may do one block virtual, while maybe they're in their classroom by themselves and they can do a live lesson. When I was a classroom teacher and taught geography, I essentially did the same lesson throughout the day multiple times. So, the same thing could happen there. Uh, will students riding the bus be required to ride three to a seat? We do have some buses where students are required to ride three to a seat. Again, the social distancing guidelines on students riding buses allow us to do so if all the students are wearing a mask. Why don't I put my cursor there, Ms. Duncan, and you read me some questions, please.
Sure. One that I mentioned that came out earlier was asking about bus drivers. What type of mask, if they'll, if they'll be wearing a mask at all?
One question that gets asked a lot is, will face shields substitute for masks? The answer is clearly no. That's not a Scott County School's decision, that's a Department of Public Health's decision. Certainly, we're not going to prohibit face shields. Many people would like to do that as an extra layer of precaution. We are working with Toyota, and Toyota has been a great partner through, for me and my team throughout this because, uh, months ago, they started the process to reopen, so there are several steps ahead of us. We are looking at some face shields that, um, are in fact suitable solutions for masks. So, um, we're optimistic that we can find an issue like that for bus drivers. I, I will tell you that there's still a lot of discussion at the state level about finding out a way where our bus drivers can drive without wearing masks. So, we're looking to do that.
Uh, the next question is specifically about Scott County School that applies across the district. Will we be having open houses?
Great question on open houses, and that is something that, uh, literally I had a principal's meeting on Tuesday at 10 o'clock, and at 2 o'clock during the commissioner's webcast, all the rules changed. Currently, we're at a group of 50, unless it's a social gathering, barbecue, or block party, where the two that the governor, uh, said. We want to do open houses because we know how important open houses are to parents to get to know teachers and to build relationships. Um, we are planning to do open houses, but to the extent that we're going to do those, we're going to be guided by the guidance that comes out. Also, it's important for everybody to remember that we're five weeks away from the start of school. So, there still is plenty of time, one, for us to get answers to finalize some of these issues, um, two, for us to find out that some of the things we think are going to be true are completely wiped off the map. What's more likely than not to happen this time, that we always try to prevent from happening every other year, is there may be conflicts in schedules. If you have children at multiple schools, because we're not going to be able to have a single open house with hundreds of people at Western and hundreds of people at, well, at Spring, that there may be multiple nights at multiple schools, and maybe there's going to be conflict. But yes, we know how important open houses are. But yes, we know how important open houses are.
And this is probably more of a health department question, but I think it's worth addressing. Students are sent home to quarantine, do their entire families have to quarantine also?
That is, so the question was, if students are sent home to quarantine, do their entire families have to quarantine? Based on the decision tree metrics that we have so far, it doesn't appear that that's going to be a Department of Health guideline. But again, once contact tracing starts, all of those questions and answers fall into the lap of the Health Department. Dr. Miller has been great. I didn't mean to drop that in your lap, but that's, you'll be handling that.
There's going to be several questions about what's it going to look like, what kindergarten's going to look like without masks? Concerned about social distancing, will they be isolated with upper grade students, that sort of thing?
So, we're still going to, you know, there are, there are going to be times when a decision is made that a student is not going to be required to wear a mask. And in this case, it's been said that that's going to happen for preschool students and kindergarten students, and the rules then for those classrooms are going to be different. So, what we're, so preschool is easy because in Scott County, our preschool students are at the Scott County preschool in one location. We are making sure to the extent possible that we are eliminating kindergarten and one split classrooms so we don't have that issue to go back and forth. How about a couple more, and then I'll go back to the next group.
We may get in a little bit, but concerns about the students that for whatever reason don't wear masks, whether it's for health reasons, personal reasons, or just choice. What about the bus ride? What would that look like for them? Will they be allowed to run the bus?
Okay, so if a student gets on the bus and refuses to wear a mask, we are not permitted by law, nor would we ever want to leave a child unaccompanied by a parent at a bus stop because we know many of our parents have already gone to work and we're not going to leave a six-year-old to fend for themselves that day. We are going to have that child on the bus. We're going to ask that child to wear a mask, we're going to provide him a mask. If they're not going to wear a mask for the safety of the other students on the bus, we're not going to have, I mean, that's not going to be a discussion back and forth in a situation that the bus driver's going to have to handle. The Health Department assures us that for the length of a bus trip, if everybody else is wearing a mask, that that won't automatically make everybody else test positive. So, we want the support of parents for kids to wear masks. Now, if it happens all the time, remember that pupil transportation is a privilege now, right?
Sure. All right, and now several questions coming up about parents concerned about advanced placement at high school level, what's that going to look like virtually? Is it possible?
Okay, so what I will do, so the question was, what about advanced placement classes at high school? And I'm going to now toggle back to these classes. What would curriculum look like for virtual, and are there going to be examples? Yes, teachers are developing their virtual classes now, whether it's virtual second grade, or whether whether it's virtual Kentucky history, or whether it's virtual geometry. There's been no discussion about eliminating advanced placement. In order for us to determine how these classes are going to be offered, we need as many parents as possible to respond to this latest round of survey questions, how your children will want to start school. Our high school master schedules are being built from scratch based on this data, and of course, you would want us to build them from scratch. Some classes that were routinely offered are now not going to be offered. Why are they not going to be offered? So that we can free up those staff members, maybe to supervise and moderate an an edge annuity session or a virtual session where many students are working on their own. It's also going to be the case that by freeing up those teachers, we may be able to add an additional math class or an additional English class so that we can have the potential to social distance our children. So, basically, those curriculum are being developed. I would think that, you know, we're kind of shooting for mid-August to get schedules firmed up and back out. Now, remember, I'm the superintendent that expects from both high schools that students leave before the summer and they have their schedule for the next year. This year, that's not going to be the case. It is entirely possible that a child's high school schedule may not be given to them until just a few days or a week before school starts, and that's going to be based on how much information that we get from everybody else. How will attendance be monitored for home students and grading scales differ? Grading scales aren't going to differ. As far as attendance, attendance in Kentucky is still compulsory under the law. But what we are going to do is we are focusing on participation because that's how the data gets reported to the state. It's possible that your child may be truant. If your child's truant, it's because they have not at all tried to engage in any option that's been available to them. If students are trying to engage and if they are participating in person or virtually, then they won't be truant. We understand that there's going to be times when a parent note is needed for an excuse. At this time, we plan to develop a revision to our attendance plan that's going to provide unlimited parent notes. Can I have?
Sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
How can we do standard-based grading, though, with virtual learning? That's just thinking ahead.
How can we do standard-based grading? If this child meets the standard, then they've met the standard. All of our summer work has been actually based on standards. I think you heard Mr. Vicknall talk about for, the teachers have been working on red, yellow, green for every single standard for every single child. Green is they were, they were taught the standard, they were exposed to the standard, they met the standard. Yellow is they were taught the standard, they were exposed to standard, that we don't know if they met it in assessment, in the fall will let us know, and the red, they haven't at all. So, I don't see how that's going to make a difference to standard-based grading at all. Performance-based, a little different. It's hard to dissect a cat at home.
Exactly.
High school students, I encourage you not to try to dissect cats. They dissect cats. I was blown with it, dissect cats in high school. Who would thought that? Okay, so can after-school activities still work if we have to share materials? One of the questions, and it may be out here later, is what about school supply list? And I'm talking really fast now because we've got 129 more messages, and I want to answer all of them that I can. Supplies are going to be a little bit different. We're going to try to minimize the sharing of supplies, so kids are going to have their own supplies. So, if they go to after-school, they're going to play with their crayons and their scissors and their little paper. We've got outstanding after-school professionals that know how to do this type of thing, and they're going to make sure that that is a workable solution.
Okay, on onto that. Well, KDE and can we combine in the afternoons, you know, where we're keeping everyone separate through the day? When we get to after-school, can we combine classes together?
No, actually, like I said earlier, the requirements are more stringent. We're going to have to have fewer students per, so actually, it's not only not combined, we have to spread out more. So, depending on the staff that we can get to work, there may be fewer opportunities for after-school care.
Okay, because that's a question that I've had frequently because, you know, in after-school care, it's kind of a free-for-all. You know, you have all grades in the gym and whatsoever, so we can't do that.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Does Scott County Schools tend to publish the staff responses and 20 pages of feedback for staff to review as well as the data collected? Renee, I don't see any reason why that we can't take all of that anonymous staff data and publish it out there. I I know that, I'm just looking around the room, I read them all, Renee read them all, Mrs. Prigman read them all, and it's, they will, and again, great question. We certainly don't mind if you're transparent, we'll put all those out there. Five or six categories, basically, is where all of those responses generally.
Have we, I think we skipped a few questions.
I don't think we've skipped a single question. I've not skipped, yeah, I've not skipped a single one. Were there any specials and encore classes, RPE, music libraries? Yes, in most of our schools, we're going to continue to offer those special classes. Will kids doing the virtual option be able to take assessments to track their progress? Yes, they will. Is virtual going to be structured? It's going to be structured, as you mentioned earlier, it's not going to be structured that if if it's 9:00 and you're doing geometry for a high school student, it's not necessarily that at 9:00 that you're doing geometry if you're doing virtual. Some parents like, and some students really thrive in that very structured environment. Some students thrive in a very unstructured environment where they're going to sit at night in their room on their bed with their laptop, and they're doing it there. So, again, we want to provide as many options as we can. Can I talk a bit more about switching modes? Yes, it is as simple as showing up in person and not showing up and doing virtual. Clearly, you and your student are going to have a much more beneficial education opportunity if you keep everybody informed about what you want to do. If you are an in-person student for three days and on Thursday, for some reason, you are now virtual, you'll be able to access virtual. Now, remember, here's what that's going to mean. You might have Mr. Miller teaching you while you're in-person, and you might have Mrs. Smith teaching you the class while you are virtual. We do not think it's fair, nor do we expect a single teacher to be responsible for teaching all three options, in-person, virtual, and paper pencil. So, in most cases, those teachers will be doing one of those options. In some cases, like I mentioned earlier about I may teach three sections of in-person Algebra II, and I may teach one section of virtual Algebra II, well, I am doing a little bit of both, but I've not overfilled my day of planning. I will tell you that our teachers at Elkhorn Crossing School, many of them have asked for the opportunity. Now, the student numbers of Elkhorn Crossing are a little bit different, the types of classes are a little bit different, and they're going to have a longer planning period in the middle of the day. So, for some of those teachers, they may be doing more than one option. Okay, so we have another, what happens if a child gets COVID? That's going to be in our decision tree. Yes, the, and I just, yeah, the Elkhorn Crossing programs will be available virtual. Yes, you can start out and you can change your mind, you'll just want to communicate with your teachers in your school. Yes, the students can attend virtual classes any time of day. No, the misters are not sprayed into the air around students all day. Your students will not be walking through a fog of cleaning. We're going to be clean, but they will, it won't be. Yeah, I just talked about, no, students who transition from in-class to virtual and virtual to in-class won't necessarily have the same teacher. And I will also tell you that it's entirely possible that their in-person teacher may change because if I'm with Mrs. Powers and Mrs. Powers suddenly has to quarantine, maybe Ms. Duncan has now got that group of students. So, it is really going to be different, it's really going to be fluid, but I will tell you that our principals are understanding how to make this happen, and I'm going to say for the fifth time, the more and accurate data that we can get from you as family members, the more helpful it's going to be in us developing master schedules that allow the flexibility that we're giving you. You know, we're giving you a ton of flexibility as families to choose. It's going to be helpful if you give us a lot of data, then we can make that flexibility work the most. So, how will teachers have the time to support virtual and online? Again, we're not expecting teachers to do that with very few cases that because that they're going to choose to do that. And I will also tell you that right now, if I am the virtual teacher and the Board of Education or my social studies peer mates, we might all agree to develop a unit or two for US History, and we're going to share those units. So, even though you're in my virtual classroom, you may have a unit on, I don't know, Reconstruction from Diamond Road. So, work on that tonight. Children with special education services are going to continue? Yes, so a question is, if we choose to keep our child home, will it still be included in things, right? The things that make school school outside of education. Yes, we certainly are going to want to make that happen, but also, there are going to be lots of things, things, right, that just aren't going to happen like they used to. Scholastic book fairs. My children have always loved scholastic book fairs.
I still love scholastic books.
But if you've been to them pretty hard to social distance and the spraying of books and the, you know, oh, I want Diary of a Wimpy Kid. No, now I want Encyclopedia Brown, okay? That's that's kind of COVID city, so I don't see that happen. But yes, we certainly are not going to leave kids out depending on the option that they choose or their family choose. More questions about testing positive. Now, I will say, because this one specifically asks about communication, we don't tell all of you as parents that a student in your child's class has the flu, so don't expect us to be able to do the same thing for COVID-19. That'll be a Department of Public Health issue. They will do contact tracing, that will be outside of the school, but we have privacy issues that we have to take care of for us at schools. How will ECS students be served virtually? No different than the other students in the district who choose to serve virtually. What I'm hearing from some teachers is that, you know, it's possible, let's just say, an engineering class might have a CO2 car unit where they're looking at friction and elevation and acceleration and speed. Well, maybe a teacher offers a couple nights a week, hey, listen, I'm going to be at the Burkes Nest Athletic Field parking lot, and if you would like to show up there in person with your mask on, this is how we can do a lab like that. Teachers are already coming up with ideas on how to make each of these environments communal. Will there be set times for virtual learning? No. And again, I know that a lot of these questions were done a half hour ago, and we're just cycling through them, so some of them are, they're exactly the same, that's okay. More symptomatics, decision tree. Outside volunteers? Yes, we would love to have as many volunteers as we can. Of course, volunteers require confidentiality checks. We want you to do that, and you have to maintain the same social distancing and wear masks. But your school principals and your school teams are going to be appreciative of volunteers because there's going to be a lot of things that we're going to need your help with. Today, the response here is the deputy governor said he would not expect staff to report to school because of the current numbers. Just like I said initially, the governor has asked inter-commissioner Kevin Brown to ask districts to postpone the start until the end of August like we already have because of the numbers spiking. And the the governor certainly can require all of us in Kentucky to do virtual only like he did in the spring. I'm still optimistic and hopeful that because we're sure that we can provide a safe environment for students and staff, that we could really let the Scott County community have a chance to do to providing both options. Yes, for ECS student, they can go to ECS in-person and attend Great Crossin virtually. There's no reason why they can't. No, teachers aren't going to be responsible to do both. They don't need to be on a device all day. You know, that's just not good for kids, it's not good, it's not good for pedagogy, it's not good for student achievement that they're that they're spending six hours online. Just because we're using a Google Classroom environment doesn't mean that everything is is done virtually. I don't know, maybe maybe a young child, maybe the task is walk around your house and identify all of the objects that are cylinders, okay? You know, I don't know, that's not going to be, Robin is laughing at me trying to come up with elementary curriculum ideas, but it's all right. Will the schedule be different at all, i.e. fall break? No, fall break at this time is scheduled to be a full fall break. We think lots of people have scheduled vacations and not. Now, I'll also tell you that based on the recent travel mandate, I would encourage everybody to keep in mind what those travel mandate guidelines are. If, you know, who knows what's going to happen? If we have 150 of our staff members go to a hotspot on the break and they're all forced to self-quarantine for two weeks, I can't imagine that we'll be able to report back after only one week of fall break, but who knows what's going to happen? What about positive tests? This question is, for this meeting specifically, will there be an opportunity for public comment from participants? Renee, let's try to work on having a Google form so that, I'm not interested in everybody posting a comment and then everybody else chiming in on that comment because I think that that gets people at odds against each other. I want people to have the freedom of anonymity to share whatever they want to based on what we're talking about tonight. So, yes, we will provide some platform that you can provide just basically a text box comment, and then, you know, we'll look at those, and I can't see why we wouldn't want to share those out there. Great question, actually. We had to talk about that. Will virtual learning be live? No. No. Please repeat the question, we cannot hear. I think I have been, so I'm sorry if you missed that one. Procedure. Another test positive question. Why are we considering going in-person because as education professionals, we believe is absolutely best for students? And, and then I'll say this too, I think that in my role, differently probably from the school principals, and I would think really that as a superintendent and board team, certainly we're responsible for 10,000 students, but I would also say that we have some broader reaches and expectations too. And, you know, lots of times when we make decisions, it impacts the entire community. Every time we close school for a snow day, every time we close school for a state championship run, every time we close school for a flu, it makes an impact on the business community and the community as a whole. We understand that this is the same way and we're trying to provide an option that has the best impact on the student. Let me do a couple more, Susan, and then we'll get to Facebook if there's something. Was the plan test positive? That's decision tree. Children under five still have to wear masks all day? No. They are not, children are not gonna be required to have their temperatures taken before they get on the bus. Some of our buses have instructional aids on them or bus monitors on them, and in those cases, temperatures can be checked. That'll just be that number of fewer students that have to be checked when we enter school. But again, for safety reasons, many of you know that we have buses that pick up students for much of the year in the dark on some backcountry curvy roads where it's just not safe for a school bus to be stopped any longer than it has to be. I mentioned doors staying open? So, there's two things, what about windows and what about doors? So, number one, I wasn't clear. When I said that doors are gonna be open, oh, you gotta be kidding me, guess what this crazy computer is doing? Well, okay, great, we'll get Facebook, right, I'm restarting, you know, of course, I'm restarting.
Do you want me to read the questions to you?
No, no, 'cause we'll do Facebook, so hold on just a second. But, doors. Not exterior doors, interior classroom doors that if you're not aware, currently are closed and locked because that's the best safety protocol. Interior classroom doors we're gonna leave open so not every kid is touching the doorknob, but our exterior doors will remain shut because we still believe that that's safe. So, let's do some Facebook questions. Sheila, what you'll probably need to be prepared to give me is the link that I can go back to into Google so we can get back to it.
Okay, lots of questions about the decision tree, like several references to it, they're asking just more explanation about what that areas, if that's handled, if that's in the seat.
So, a decision tree, picture a flow chart that says, a staff member has symptoms, yes or no? Yes, they have symptoms, do they also have a fever, yes or no? Do they have a negative test, yes or no? Positive test, yes or no? Okay, they report directly to GO or they go to school or they go to Department of Public Health, so that's what that decision tree will be. It will be widely available when it gets, hold on just a second, please.
Once it's vetted.
Once it is vetted, I would tell, I would say that it's probably gonna be sometime next week that we, well, I would like to put one on the street so that everybody can see one. Here's the danger of putting one on the street. That's the one that everybody will have, and then if we make a corrected one, not everybody is going to get that one and throw it in the garbage, that'll be the one that's on the refrigerator and change. I'm optimistic, though, that within that period of time, we are going to be able to share something out.
7:04 is about where you were and there's questions if you're gonna try to find where you were.
Awesome, yeah. So, let.
Yeah, right at 7:04.
You were talking about windows and doors.
Yep. So, what, code form, there you go, thank you very much.
Okay, while you're getting on.
You can, yeah.
I can, there's several questions coming on Facebook about access technology for parents that have multiple children, that sort of thing. And you go back to something Dr. I've already mentioned, very little of the virtual learning is going to be time-specific, so if you have multiple children and not enough devices for one per child, it shouldn't be a problem because not everyone's going to have to be on at the exact same time to get that technical care of. So, and school will be working with students on those issues. Another question that was asked was about access to extracurricular activities. If the student is doing pencil and paper or virtual, they will have access to all extracurricular activities within the district as the laws allow and it's time. So, that's, that's not a problem. He's trying to get his access, let's see, as far as sports and activities regarding KHS.
If I could have let you do this the whole night simply by reshutting down my computer, you don't think I would've scheduled that for 7:02?
It's called learned helplessness, right? Everything to do with athletics is really outside of our purview right now. KHSAA is making those decisions and we're, DT is working with them and our ADs at school and we'll be following their guidelines and obviously, to the degree they're allowing us, those activities we type in like.
We'll know next week on that.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see. This is a good question, will staff members and employees be required to test for COVID before coming into the building?
No. So, the question was, is everybody gonna be required to test for COVID? No, they're not. And guess what? We talked about having patience and flexibility, so here's what everybody's gonna have to do. If you typed in a question and I didn't get an answer, you need to retype your question because right now, if you wanna come to the front of the line, type fast because I have zero chat questions, so Susan, go on for a few more and then we go.
Sure, there's a question about whether or not, or can you just speak again to class sizes, are we going to set them up?
Is that not an open meeting violation?
Work within our.
What's that, how's that open?
I was just asking, I mean, 'cause they're here, like, I just didn't know, 'cause we have 163 messages.
Okay, so.
I just wanna make sure everybody gets their time in.
Class sizes, are we setting a max size or are we, I think you already answered, based on the size of the room, we're working on social distancing. I'm just curious about class sizes, if there's a maximum and how that's gonna be addressed.
Excuse me, Susan, I get a note, they can't hear you very well on the stream.
Okay. Should I?
Well, let's go back to me, so I'll go to the question where you said, yeah, are there class sizes? There aren't necessarily any class size limitations. It's gonna be rare when students are in such a place where they're not gonna be able to social distance, so they're gonna be wearing masks, right? So, we're not gonna do that. So, let's go because now we have, yeah, we got a bunch. And again, I apologize to everybody, but really, we were getting to the point where four out of five questions were repeats anyway. Are we considering a hybrid model? We're not considering a hybrid model, but we are certain, we'll certainly let every family do their own hybrid model if that works for them. And Katie, I don't know if you're muted because your sound keeps coming on here, okay?
Can I interrupt you real quick, Dr.?
Sure.
I just wanna reiterate, 'cause I'm seeing the questions now that they couldn't hear. The question, we had several questions about technology and if a parent had multiple children and not enough devices for one per, and my response was that because virtual learning wasn't gonna be specific time-based, there'd be the ability for students to share their devices and individual schools will work with those particular situations. And they didn't hear that, so I just wanted to share.
Could we consider virtual open houses? Yes. The elementary schools specifically are already talking about virtual open houses, and hearing that, I know that our secondary schools are doing the same types of things. Who can I ask about high-risk students wanting to do in-person schooling? If they are our most fragile special need students that have health issues, you can talk to Tammy Vissodi. Otherwise, probably you can direct those questions to Lynn Switzer. If a student is high-risk but needs a device, well, we are providing an in-person option and we're providing a virtual option, but yes, some students are gonna be virtual and yet we're not providing technology for every student. It's my understanding that most schools have figured out a way to distribute technology to the families that need it most, and even though we're not one-to-one as a district, many of our students are gonna be able to have devices because schools already know that they're, they know the families and they're gonna be able to get one-to-one. Is this decision being put to a vote? I, you know, this board is supportive of our decision to offer both models. It's the, it's not the board's decision to determine this. Certainly, the board and I have been in discussion throughout this plan.
For a week.
For a week, yeah, well, really, I mean, we announced it at the last, the last monthly meeting, so that's what it's gonna be. Yes, kindergarten parents may allow their kids to wear masks. There's not gonna be a vote, but certainly at the time when the board tells me to stop answering questions, I'm sure if each of them would like to chime in, there's gonna be no reason why we can't. Is there gonna be kindergarten orientation or field trips? At this point, we have put a temporary pause on our field trips because we don't think that's gonna be safe nor the benefit of the curriculum is gonna be, is gonna be such. Will Summit classes work for students who still choose in-person? Yes.
I think it's a good question here, I wanna chime in. They're asking about seniors and the high schools are gonna be making exceptions with regard to some electives, obviously they've got, you know, already got enough credits, will they just be required maybe to take their?
So, the question was about high school students and having the ability to graduate if we do some change in the amount of credits that are required?
Well, just getting out of the extra electives.
Well, right, so, so what'll happen is, I imagine that that is something that will be coming to the board. We did do it for our graduating class of 2020 because we were already that far in, but many of you guys have seen the stuff that's come out through the Kentucky School Board Association that, that there is some flexibility at the state level for the board then to make an exception for the class of 2021 to change the credits required for graduation, which would then eliminate many of them, the other requirements they have for graduation. Will there be sports for seniors because scholarships depending on it, the Kentucky High School Athletic Association will provide the guidance and we'll follow that lead. Let's see, will libraries be open and books available for checkout? It's my understanding that that answer will be yes, but again, there's gonna be minimal opportunities, but we do have cleaning protocols in place to make that happen. The official start later this evening, pending no changes, is that the first student day of attendance is gonna be August 26th. Summit classes will work, it's gonna work for virtual as well as paper pencil packet people? Senator Peter Parker?
Believe me, I've said that.
Good question. From one of our substitutes, what type of, what type of additional training will be provided for our substitutes?
Well, so, I don't know that any training will be required because our, you know, but there will be the guidance to stay socially distanced and to wear a mask. Some of our substitutes may choose to maybe be responsible for like a, there are, based on the certification, it allows, for example, a teacher of one content area to supervise online students who are taking multiple classes. So, a social studies teacher can monitor a classroom where students are taking online science, online social studies, online math, we could have a subteacher do that too. How will you keep the preschool staff safe when the kids do not have to wear masks? That is a question that has been asked across the Commonwealth and the preschool guidance was given out last week, and there are lots of ways that they are considering to do that. In Scott County, Principal Jennifer Walra has devised a plan where the preschool students are gonna come fewer days so that now the classroom sizes are gonna be minimized because the number of instructional hours requirement really doesn't exist for our preschool students. So, we think that by constantly, and preschool really has in place these requirements that already emphasize hand washing and cleaning of the manipulatives that our students are gonna be using. Will teachers be provided sufficient materials to keep clean? Again, another question about high-risk students and in-person? Yes, there are gonna be considerations, but again, if those considerations don't meet the satisfaction of the students and their families, then we're providing that virtual options. Can all teachers opt to teach virtually? That's gonna be a decision that's gonna be made at the school level. Is virtual like NCI work or will it be like this broadcast? There's gonna be a little of both. Some is gonna be streamed, some is gonna be a video that can be downloaded, some is gonna be a link, some is gonna be resources that students can download and read or print or make copies of. Are teachers being offered the same choice for hybrids? Yes, they are. Again, that's gonna come out in Staff Survey Number Two, which we'll put on the street next week. Would like the decision tree be made on the website? As soon as we think it's best to put one out there. And if, I understand that seeing that decision tree might be what triggers a family to make the decision about in-person or not, and we would like your response by the 26th. Again, knowing that you have the flexibility to switch back and forth, it's gonna be helpful for us if you will, to the best of your ability, make a decision. Now, we'll get the decision tree out there as quick as we can, but right now, we're just not comfortable that enough answers are out there, and we'd rather not give you bad information and have to retract and change because I can't be sure that everybody is gonna get the new change and then it's really gonna be confusing. Yes, if your child is sick, because remember, we're not just, you know, we haven't stopped strep throat, we haven't stopped mono, we haven't stopped the stomach bug. If your children are sick and they're in person, they can certainly stay home. They can stay home when they're not required to do virtual. They can stay home and simply have parent note, sick day excuses, and they can come back to in-person later.
Dr. Huff?
Yes.
Have it up there, please, real quick.
Yes.
On the, because we've gotten so many questions about the decision tree, you know, we put these documents out on our website, can't we put something on there with the decision tree with these documents with a date on it saying, as of this date, flexible to change or likely to change or may change or something, just so folks can see what you're talking about, just like this? Just a thought?
Thank you for that thought. Special ed children, early age child who can't wear a mask? Yes, they can still come to school without wearing a mask, but they may have to be in that isolation room. So, what about supplies for students that don't have them? Our Family Resource and Youth Service Centers and other staff has already figured out how to do some of that. So, the health guidelines say that is, you're gonna eat without a mask, how can we ensure the protection of staff and students? Well, we're gonna do the best that we can, but the fact is, when people eat, they're gonna take off their mask.
Several comments I'm seeing, I think that there's about a point here, a lot of, a lot of these questions were getting kind of out of weeks and are pretty specific to schools depending on their situation. Is it worth considering that maybe once we give the information back, we get a better feel for what each school population's gonna work like, that maybe our smaller principals could do some Q and A's similar to what you're doing right now so that those parents can get some specific answers from those principals?
So, the question is, since many of the, well, a lot of these are district issues, but certainly there are a basket full of issues that are gonna be different school by school by school. Yes, our principals are chomping at the bit to communicate, just like we've been chomping at the bit, but again, this was always gonna be the perfect time to have this virtual town hall, if you will. Our principals are ready to take on the next step once they see how many families sign up, how they choose the options, and how it's gonna be set up in their schools. And I think I was talking with a couple principals today, and, you know, they're gonna do a lot of this same format, they may not choose to do it live, what they may choose to do is kind of like I did that first frequently asked question, it was almost like a, like a podcast, right? I took a bunch of questions and I did a voice recording that they could put out there, and certainly Renee and I and our team will help make it easy for principals. Will you consider a hybrid model? Yes, we have, and you're welcome to do it because that's an option that you can choose. How will we have enough subs? We've got some options available that I'm gonna be discussing during my superintendent's report to incentivize more subs by increasing pay if they can agree to work a specified number of days at a time so we know how to prepare. The early thought is that, you know, if you're willing to sign a temporary working agreement The early thought is that, uh, you know, if you're willing to sign a temporary working agreement to work for 10 days, we're able to, for some, uh, bump up the pay, um, I don't know, in some cases, seventy, eighty, a hundred dollars a day based on what's already in our salary schedule, um, and, and we think that that's gonna help. Of course, if you sign up for 10 days and you decide to only work seven, then your pay will revert back to the standard pay.
Dr. Huff, can you tell me what timeframe you're on, so I can kind of follow?
Seven forty-eight, seven forty-nine.
Is there at a point to where we'll stop taking comments, so that we can get...
Okay.
And I have a list of questions that I wanna ask as well.
Yeah, so, and though, the question was from Ms. Powers was, are we gonna get to a point where we're gonna stop taking these questions here? And then we'll move on with our board meeting. Um, yeah, the answer is sure. Um, and then what'll happen is we will, we will figure out the, the best plan to move forward if this, if this needs to be something, um, there's no reason why something like this can't be done outside of a board meeting. So, if the board tonight says, hey, listen, you know, 'cause we'll know like over the weekend, and most of you are on social media, and as board members, you have the best pulse, um, you, you have the best knowledge of the pulse of the community. If, if it was, hey, this is a flop, this was a waste of time, don't ever do it again, or hey, this was really pretty helpful, I wish it could've been longer, then maybe we'll set up, you know, one week for the next whatever. Because we learned, I mean, look at how awesome it was when we did so much talking about the recolable interval, when we did so much talking about the redistricting plan. So, everybody, you, you know, I will, uh, I will speak until I can't speak anymore to answer questions because we know there's a lot of concern out there, but, um, we do have to do this too. So, I'll keep going until you tell me to be quiet, Mr. Cherry. Probably five more minutes, probably something like that, is that's...
Well, yeah, I was trying to jot down a couple here that I noticed we haven't yet.
How are we taking kids outside in bad weather? Well, we won't, just like we do during the regular school year. That if it's raining or, um, it's snowing, then, uh, yes, it's possible. If it rains all day, the child's not gonna have an opportunity outside of lunchtime to remove their mask, unless they're in social distance. Uh, why do teachers not have a seat at the decision-making table? Um, I will tell you that there have been teachers involved in this process all throughout the summer. Uh, you know, again, we talked about hundreds of professional development sessions that we had where teachers were talking about plans for this year. Um, there's our teachers giving lots of feedback to principals, and we've had principal meetings, uh, nearly weekly with myself or one of the assistant superintendents all summer long. So, um, I am, I, I'm, I'm confident that we're getting lots of information and feedback from teachers. So, um, there we go.
Can we iterate, reiterate one more time about access technology and materials? That those students going to be forced to come to school because they don't have access to the material they need in order to receive an education outcome? There's just maybe several questions, I'm just gonna make sure we...
So, the question is, if we don't have access to technology, must we come to in-person school? No, you don't have to, but if you don't have access to technology and you're not able to secure technology from your school, then the suggestion would be that you try the paper pencil packet route, because we also think that that's gonna be an effective solution for many of our students and their families. Um, would you like now then to turn it over to the, uh, board questions that they might have?
I look like a lot of these are, you, you answered.
So, what's, and again, thank you, everybody, but, but what I'm hearing from some of the board members who are basically scrolling further through the list than I am, that a lot of the questions are repetitive, uh, that doesn't, uh, that doesn't eliminate the fact that, that you're, um, forty-seven questions from now, and you've asked a question, excuse me, that hasn't been answered, but, uh, there will be more time for you to ask those questions. What we owe you is a opportunity for, to provide comments for tonight. And then quite honestly, I, I, I think Renee, that we will also provide him an opportunity to ask questions because it may be good that we do, um, another, maybe we take them in batches and we put some podcasts out there. If you have questions about options, here they are. If you have questions about meals, here they are. So, uh, Renee is, uh, nodding affirmatively in the back, so I think we can do that. So, I'm gonna take a drink and I'm gonna mask up because...
Well, the one question I've, I've seen then, it's only been the one pop-up, was for substitute teachers. Uh, are, are you assigning them a specific two or three schools? Or are they going from any school in the district, like normal? Or are they just assigned to district for the tracking side of it, was one of the questions I saw.
Okay, so for substitute teachers, you know, we run short on subs all the time, and we really appreciate both our certified and our classified subs. Um, we have a plan that, uh, we're really just kinda teasing out the details, but essentially, our hope is that if a substitute teacher agrees to work for 10 days, Monday, the twenty-fourth of August, through that Friday in September, which maybe is like the fourth, the first full, two full weeks of school, our hope is that by August tenth, we can say, okay, by that late, if you agree for two weeks, we can and will pay you this increased amount. We hope that that incentivizes them to sign up and commit for 10 days. Once we have that pool of substitutes, then we'll look around at our schools, because again, by August tenth, we're gonna know these master schedules are gonna be developed. We're short a little bit here, we've got a need over here, we don't have a need over here. Then we can deploy those subs. Um, the hope is that if you're deployed for those 10 days, you'll be deployed to one specific school. That would be the hope.
And you'll know more once you get your master?
We'll know more when we get that master schedule out there, but, uh, contact, uh, Corinda Toy or Billy Parker in our central office if you're interested in being a subteacher, and certainly if you're interested in volunteering, contact your school principals.
Counselors available on virtual?
Yes, we're gonna make sure that we have some, uh, counselors available virtually, that they put some time out there where they can have virtual appointments. Because, uh, we, we understand and, and we appreciate the social, emotional, uh, well-being and how, um, it's just been difficult for children because the, the daily schedules have been interrupted, the whole, I mean, you know, if you grew up as a kid, you go to school. We've got kids that haven't been in school for six months.
Real difference now. Home visits from teachers, will they still happen as needed?
So, the preschool guidance document limited some of their home visits. Um, and, and we're gonna take a little different turn, and we're gonna call them wellness checks. It's gonna be important for some of our students that they get checked on at home by our staff. And as long as our staff can, uh, stay safe, we're gonna allow them to do that. Actually, I'm getting lots of staff that say, can we still check on our kiddos at home? Because they want to.
And will we be allowing kindergarten kids who want to wear a mask to come to school wearing a mask?
Yes. You can always, uh, be more protected than we're asking you to do.
Now, those were just a few that I saw.
Ms. Powers, you said you had a bunch of questions, maybe, or a few?
I've got a couple pages. Um, and, and they're not personal questions, they're, things I've built, it's a... So, will the staff, are we gonna give them the option to teach virtually if they're, if they don't feel comfortable coming into the buildings?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do, do they, are they gonna be allowed to choose what online program they use? Like, do, are they gonna be pigeonholed into using Google Classroom? Or they can, they, sorry, can they use Schoology or Clever Tech?
We're gonna use Google Classroom as the foundation for our virtual learning. Uh, but certainly, teachers are gonna be able to use other resources that they always have to help students learn better.
'Cause, for example, some teachers already have things developed, like Schoology and Canvas, and, you know, their students might already be used to that if they have returning students. Um, so they can continue on with that. Um, and then the popping back and forth with the grading, like, if there's in-person grades, like how? That seems like it's, it would be very difficult. You know, if you have a kid in class and then they're not in class, what are the parameters for that gonna be?
So, if I'm given a math quiz, you can take the math quiz when you're sitting in front of me, or you can take the math quiz online. If you're gonna submit a paper, well, no, you're in English, okay? Let's say you're gonna submit an English paper. You're gonna submit an English paper. You're gonna read it online.
I'm thinking more about like the CTE people, I think, you know...
Well, but I talked about in engineering class, where some of those teachers are already talking about, um, we're gonna provide a time to have an engineering activity outside. It's entirely possible that, you know, Dr. Adams may say, um, I'm gonna provide an opportunity for those of you that have chosen not to come in person, um, but I'm gonna come at night, or I'm gonna come on the weekend and offer some of you the opportunity to complete this lab. Uh, listen, I, I don't have any concerns that our teachers are gonna go above and beyond to do that, but yes, there are gonna be some of those things that just don't work in person. Uh, there are gonna be some of those things that just don't work virtually, and they're just not gonna work, and we're gonna be doing the best we can.
Worst-case scenario, we don't get to go back. Not, you know, it's not our choice, we don't get to go back. Are we gonna allow the staff into the building to work? 'Cause, for example, somebody, you know, personally, Stephanie Powers would be more comfortable teaching in a classroom than my dining room table. You know, if they mask up when they're in the general areas of the building, and then they can mask, unmask when they're in the classroom alone. Are we gonna allow them to do that?
During, during what was spring NTI, our schools were shut down because we didn't, there was so much we didn't know about COVID-19. If the governor mandates to do all virtual, I think we're still gonna keep the, I guess the number is fifty right now, and, and you're gonna be able to mask, and you're gonna be able to come to your room to get resources and do those types of things. But I got to imagine it's still gonna look like it does now. We're gonna ask you to sign in so that our custodians will, will know, okay, here's five classes that you have to clean because some of the staff came in.
But they can pop in for an hour, record a lesson. I think they'll really appreciate that. Um, would, if a teacher gets COVID, is workers' comp available? Is that considered a part of workers' comp?
No, it's not workers' comp. Um, if, uh, but no differently than if a teacher got the flu, or if a teacher, you know, got, got whatever. Um, we're, we're gonna be able to make sure that teachers can have access to all of the days that they have accumulated. Some of our teachers run a very low balance of sick days anyway, for lots of reasons. Well, when we start this school year, the full balance is gonna kick back in, but, you know, some may, um, ha- have a sickness that causes them to burn through a bunch of days early. With a recommendation, this board has always been very good to approve unpaid leave of absences. If somebody is out of days, they won't be forced to resign their position because they don't have days.
Okay. I'm waiting out the ones that were already asked.
Sure.
Um, I have a couple...
I've got one more, sorry. At one point, I really wanna have a serious discussion about one-to-one. I'm gonna push for that, just gonna let you know. Um...
Why do you think one-to-one is the best move for the district?
Technology, where we furnish each student with a computer. One, at the number of our students at a wholesale rate, we're talking maybe three million dollars. And each household might have a device...
Three, what, three million dollars?
Maybe, I could...
Well, we have ten thousand students, I don't think they're...
That number figure can...
Three thousand dollars a piece, isn't it?
No.
Okay.
I mean, my figure might be wrong, but, um, each household might have a device, but if you've got four students in a household, they can't all use the device at once. But that is, that's a different, we can talk about that later. My last question, and, and I'll quit hogging the time. How do, um, emergency days affect teacher retirement because of this pandemic?
Okay, so, the paid emergency days then are being new by the board. They're, they're a payday.
Okay, so they don't affect their retirement? Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, good. Tryna?
I'm gonna try to, maybe she'll, is there my comment?
Oh, there is.
But, uh, Shilla says that we can all be picked up.
Yeah, okay. I was gonna say, I didn't know.
Okay, so, um, a couple of things that I just saw recurring that I don't think that we addressed. Um, the Family First Cares Act days, how does that affect retirement?
Those are gonna be ten paid days, they won't look any different than any other payday.
Okay. Um, traveling staff, OP, DT, are they still gonna go from school to school as they have been doing?
Itinerant staff is still gonna be itinerant, but we will do our best to minimize transition 'cause it makes the most sense to do that. But yet, sometimes, just by virtue of the number of staff that we have, that they're gonna have to transfer.
Um, anybody gonna be asked to sign a waiver, a waiver saying, I'm not gonna hold you responsible for if I get COVID when I come to teach?
Uh, I don't think that waiver would be worth the piglets printed on.
Okay, question. Um, and I've seen several questions, somebody keeps saying, can you please tell me the name of the person that I need to contact about my child who has special circumstances?
Yes, I will say it, no, as well, so, special leaves, that'll be Tammy Visogi.
Okay.
They can contact the central office, she is our director of special education.
Um, cleaning between classes, responsibility of teacher?
Depending on what types of cleaning that you're talking about, yes, uh, we're gonna expect our teachers to do like a quick, maybe, wipe down of the, uh, table desktops um, as, as they, as students move in and out.
And we will provide them those supplies to do that, okay? We're not gonna ask them to supply it, okay? And, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I kept seeing things about they don't have enough information, we're asking them to make this decision too soon, they need more information, and we haven't answered all the questions. We're asking them to give us an answer, you wanna do this or this for your child, but they can still change their mind up until the day they start school.
Yes, we're asking parents to help us make a decision by identifying their child choosing virtual, in-person, or paper pencil so that we can best divide out our classes, divide out our teachers. Because once we get the data from the number of students in-person, the number of students virtual, then next week, we're gonna ask our staff, what do you prefer? And then we're gonna see if there's a disconnect. We're gonna see if we've got too many staff that want virtual and not enough kids, or too many kids that want virtual and not enough teachers. Then those are the decisions that we can make at the school level to develop a master schedule, to develop the teachers and their class assignments, so that we can start to assign kids to teachers which classes are gonna get canceled, which classes are we gonna offer more of, uh, what certification areas are gonna need for this, and which are gonna do that. But the fact remains that you are not pigeonholed into your decision for this survey. You're still gonna have the option to choose.
I've got a couple, couple of questions. Uh, one is, it keeps coming up, and I feel like I, maybe I wasn't clear when I answered, what are you working on, I'm asking you to reiterate. There's been a lot of concern that we're not providing the tools. Schools are working with and will continue to work with students on materials and devices. If they don't have enough, that the family for, needs, needs a device, there's no reason to assume that school's not gonna be able to provide that for them. I'm not speaking out of turn when I say that, right? I mean, we're gonna, we're going to work with students to the degree they're able to, if they need it.
Yes.
For virtual learning, I mean, we're not...
We're not, we're not one-to-one, we haven't been one-to-one.
We have no, we have no...
This pandemic is not gonna cause us to go to one-to-one. Not to say that we, there's a whole nother discussion about one-to-one.
Sure, sure, I'm just trying to get out there and know in certain terms that there's no reason to assume that any child cannot receive the degree of education they want to receive in this district in August, when we open. Whether it's in-person, virtual, or paper and pencil. There is no reason for any family to assume that any child will be left behind with regard to one of those two choices. And then, um, the other question that I...
Just a little chat, please, Mr. Cherry, now it's still open.
The other question that I, that I'm seeing is, um, sorry, is about... I lost it. So, just give me, 'cause I, I had it.
Your comment about the waiver is a no, we are not asking our employees to sign a waiver.
We're not asking our employees to sign a waiver unless the board attorney or the board says, hey, we need to ask our employees to sign a waiver?
Cause there was some, yeah. And then the other one I was...
Some districts do, and not for me.
I couldn't hear your answer.
I'm sorry.
That's what I...
Cause there, there's still, when we, when we implied that there would be, that they didn't have to do the virtual learning in real time, there's been some disappointment on that because some of them were hoping that their students would have a structured virtual day. And I think it's fair to assume that that virtual structured day may very well be there, but will be recorded and accessible for those students who cannot fit a virtual structured day into their virtual learning model. Once again, we're offering flexibility, we're not forcing...
For everybody.
We're not forcing...
You're not required to sit in X, Y, Z class at ten, but you might be up to.
Right, the student, the, the parent that wants their child to sit for six hours in front of the computer to get those classes, they're gonna be there for that child that needs to have it grown up, that, that's why we're recording, and the flexibility's gonna be there. So, I don't think anyone should go locked into, to anything of that.
Well, when you say six hours, think about, dude, this is the discussion we have with our principals, that if, if, if a child is in a school for six hours, certainly, they are not working on... that if, if a child is in a school for six hours, certainly they are not working on school for six hours. You know, you look at the, is it a two and a half hours? Okay, well, maybe for some students in some grades it is. Well, for our AP students and our, you know, that are taking career tech ed classes, well, they may approach six hard hours of working every single day. So it just goes back and forth.
My question, how will special ed students get their accommodations when they take tests?
We are working on ways to do that virtually and there are lots of ways. For example, as a classroom teacher, sometimes the accommodations that a student needed was modified grading scale. Well, that's really pretty easy to do virtually. Sometimes students need fewer responses, so maybe on a multiple choice question, they had four responses, maybe now they're two or three. So those are accommodations that are easily made by teachers and really ways that they've been modifying tests forever.
I have a list of other questions, but I'll do that at, wrapped around all of that. For instance, are they, or what happens if they're sequestered into a mask-free area? How do those kids get their testing, you know, accommodations?
Right, so they're, if so, if they're in that isolation room, how would they, no different than in-person. Again, as a classroom teacher, for every single test I gave all of my students, I had modified tests the same way. And really, teachers are very well adept to making sure that children aren't singled out and I'm passing out the test and nobody knows that I just gave you a modified test and the four students around you didn't have a modified test. So the same thing would happen. There would be a packet of paper delivered to this isolation room, there would be a proctor in the room, hey, please make sure that Diana gets this test and then give her thirty minutes to take it. Or this is a thirty-minute test, she gives modified time, she can take up to an hour if she needs it.
I have one that's, I think you've already answered this, but it's about the supplies that will be purchased to the teachers, staff.
Yeah, we've got a significant stockpile of cleaning supplies, we've got some masks. I, I don't think the teachers are going to want for supplies to keep a safe and sanitary environment in the classroom.
Anything else from the board?
What, like the not making parents, like if we have a kid that tests positive in a classroom, is it a school decision not to make the other students aware or is it a state decision?
Well, we are not allowed to because it's a violation of the private education privacy effort, which are. And this, and it would be a health department, again, no differently than a student that has mononucleosis or a student that has strep throat, we don't tell everybody either.
I mean, I was just thinking, like, you know, if a kid gets live, we send a letter home. You know, like if, if my child were in a classroom and someone, one of his classmates got COVID, I would want to know it, not just as a safety protocol. So I was just curious, you know, speaking as a.
So, okay, so, so there's a clarifying piece there. So we wouldn't say that little Stephanie has COVID. We might say, and, and the way the health department would do that is.
Your child's been exposed.
A child in your class is being exposed. We have heard from the teacher that children in that class have always worn masks and there's no reason, or your child is a table-bait, you know, there's, there's way, okay, so yes, there is, there's a possibility for notification without specificity, it doesn't, there we go. Sorry, I was.
That was the clarification I was looking for.
Exactly, thank you.
Yes, because I think people were under the assumption that we weren't going to tell at all.
Right. Well, again, we will take that guidance on communication from the Department of Health.
Mr. Chair, can we please have a five-minute break?
Oh, please.
I guess, I guess it would be good to say, though, that a little bit later on, you're going to be in contact with social media type to revisit some of these questions, concerns, and then the piece about the, you know, the testing, what happened.
Yeah, so, so here are some things that, that we owe. We owe the distribution of our staff comments that want to get out there. We've, we've got, I guess we've got some parent comments that we can probably put out there. We're going to open up a portal so that we can, over a period of time, where we won't leave it open because we want to address the concerns that we have, where parents can, parents and community members can issue responses. They can ask questions, they can provide comments. That'll be another document that we can look at and address. And, you know, I'll talk with you guys as a board and talk with my team and then if we believe that this is something that needs to happen more than one time, we can certainly do that. And, and I don't mind to communicate with you, Mike, if it's something that you want to do Facebook Live, where I wouldn't mind to sit in my office and you can, you know, or something like that. Because it wouldn't have to be a board meeting, it's just like tonight. I mean, it worked out, we, we didn't know if we were going to have thirty people. I mean, a month ago, we knew that, hey, listen, tonight in my superintendent's report, I'm talking about the broad strokes of reopening. When we meet on July twenty-third, we will have had one parent survey, one staff survey, we're going to give more data. Waiting until the next board meeting is obviously not going to be it because that's August twenty-seventh. But if we need to do one of these once a week, I don't see any reason why, we, we certainly can't accommodate that, I'm willing to do so.
Wouldn't you say we answered over two hundred questions tonight between Facebook and with what came in? I mean, I saw the numbers coming in and they were.
They was up to thirty.
Well, and I, well, and here's, and, and again, everybody understand that. I would say that really the variations of questions weren't more than a couple dozen or so, but it was a nuanced question about really the same thing. So I understand that there are still some very specific questions that parents don't feel that were addressed. Please don't hesitate to submit those, please don't hesitate to engage in a future Zoom and Facebook Live meeting to ask those questions. But yes, I hope the community, especially our students and our families and our staff, feel that they've gotten more information tonight. I don't think there's been a lot where we haven't been able to answer. I mean, I think the special ed question, that's still being developed, but we're going to deliver those services. It, of course, is going to look different than it does when we have your child in class. The decision tree, how we're going to react in situations where there are positive tests and quarantine, we owe that information and we know that that's going to come out. And I don't think that that's going to be more than a week before we're going to be able to put something out there. And again, I still think that's fair because that's still within a month of when we start school. And I don't know that there's really much more than that. And then the technology piece, but the, as I heard principals talk, you know, Mr. Bickno in our meeting that we had this week where we talked about the instructional focus, even though, again, we're not one-to-one as a district, there were lots of principals that said, you know, really, we're about one-to-one to our school or we know our families well enough that the families that need technology will probably have technology.
But for us to go one-to-one, you know, I'm, I'm not a math person, I don't pretend to be, but we're talking like two-point-five million dollars. I think that could be a great service for our, our community, that we should really look into doing that.
Right, and that's a discussion for a different day. I would say that for many of our families, if we gave them my laptop, it's a paperweight of mine. And see, that's the unfortunate thing. I mean, Judge Joe Pat Covington ran on making sure that broadband was a utility like water and electricity. And he's done the best that he can as, as government officials across Kentucky have and we still have big gaps. Even if they had the device, what would they do?
But if they don't have it.
Right.
Well, which is, which is my point that I wanted to reiterate is.
We'd love to have them in-person.
I'm fine, we'd love to have them in-person. I think that for those that need it and want it and have access to internet and want the virtual option, I can't imagine that this district is not going to find a way for that student to do that and then paper and pencil is going to be there as well. So I think we're offering enough options that there should be no student in the district that doesn't get the level of exposure and education that they're seeking this year. I feel confident with that.
So no comment from people tonight? I mean, I know the questions were there, but no, we're not letting anybody speak to the board tonight.
It was just so many, that's why we went to the chat, part of it. All right, y'all ready for your five-minute joint?
Yes, please.
If you'll pause the meeting, Ken, please.